Check, check, check. Hey, everybody. Thank you all for being here tonight. We, this is kind of a joint meeting tonight. We had a regular board meeting starting in a couple of minutes. And then we also wanted to have an opportunity to thank our outgoing board members. We have two board members who will be leaving us, and we want to celebrate them. Doug Levinson couldn't be here tonight. He had another thing that came up, a family thing, so he could not be here. But he served for eight years on our school board, and we're very appreciative of the service that he's given to the board for eight years. And then before that, as a principal and a teacher, and served this district for many, many decades. So even though he's not here, can we maybe give Doug a round of applause? And then we also wanted to celebrate Dr. Schultes. Dr. Schultes stepped in when we had a board member step down a couple of years ago and was willing to step in at a really tough time. And actually, prior to that, she served on our Strategic Plan Steering Committee and was actually involved in the strategic plan process before it was actually adopted. And so she served in that way, and has served in a lot of different capacities in our district, and then stepped up in the middle of COVID, which was a tough time, and has helped us over the last two years serving on the school board. And so, again, we just want to say appreciate you stepping into that role, serving over these last two years, and for all that you've done for our staff and our students and our families in the district. So if we can give Dr. Schultes a round of applause as well. And thanks to the folks who showed up to celebrate the board members. There is cake in the back, so even like during the meeting, if you're like, man, I'm tired of hearing about whatever we're presenting tonight, you can get cake. Or if you're here for recognition, you want to get on the way out, and then we have some gifts for Dr. Schultes and Doug in the back as well that they can take with them. So again, one more round of applause for our board members that are leaving us. So thank you all, and then we'll get started with the board meeting in just a second. Thank you.
Do you have Quiz Bowl? Who has Quiz Bowl?
Carrie.
Carrie.
Yep. Which was yours?
Oh, go to.
You're just so good at presenting. I can come up and help you. I'll help you. So. Alrighty, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. So for those of you that may be new this evening, we do have public comment this evening, and the sign up list is right over here under the television. You do get three minutes for public comments, so please sign up on the list over there. We'll call the meeting to order, do our pledge of allegiance, and then right after the pledge of allegiance, we do a short moment of silence, and then we'll do our roll call and get into our meeting. So if, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if you can stand with us, we'll go ahead and do the pledge. Director Jones, can you kick us off?
To reply on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. We can go ahead and do roll call.
Mrs. Heights.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Lima.
Here.
Mr. Levinson. Dr. Schultes.
Here.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
Dr. Schultes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 3rd, October 10th, and October 17th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Heights.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Lima.
Yes.
Dr. Schultes.
Yes.
Alright. So this evening, we're going to start with our recognitions. First, the board would like to recognize the Native American Heritage Month here in November. So whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we take this opportunity to honor and recognize the rich cultures, traditions, and contributions of Native Americans throughout history. And whereas this month serves as a reminder of the resilience, strength, and enduring legacy of Native American communities, it is a time to acknowledge the profound impact they have had on shaping the culture of our nation from their deep connection to the land to their invaluable contributions in various fields. And whereas, let this month be an opportunity to engage in meaningful dialogue, learn from one another, and collectively build a future that embraces the traditions and wisdom of the Native American communities. In doing so, we honor the past and pave the way for a unified future. And now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mesa County Valley School District Board of Education does hereby recognize November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month. May this month inspire us to continue the journey towards cultural understanding, unity, and appreciation for the vibrant contributions of the Native Americans in our nation. Alright, yes. Alright, first up, we have the Southwest League All-Conference Softball Player of the Year, and Director Jones is going to kick that off. And students, when you come to the front, for all groups except for cycling, because there's a lot of you cyclists here, please stay at the front so our Cali can get your picture. But the cycling team, you guys will get your picture out in the hallway, so.
Alrighty, well, Ava Stevens, please join me at the front of the room. Ava Stevens, a senior at Fruta Monument High School this year, has excelled as a standout shortstop for the Wildcats softball team. Her remarkable contributions have earned her a prestigious title of Southwest League Player of the Year. A highly versatile player who has seamlessly transitioned between infield and outfield positions, Ava emerged as a leader for the Wildcats. Her impressive batting performance, boasting a .583 average, 60 hits, 33 RBIs, 43 runs, and 11 home runs showcased her exceptional skills at the plate. Additionally, serving as the team captain, Stevens demonstrated not only her individual athletic talent, but also her leadership on and off the field. This is well-deserved recognition and is a testament to her outstanding contributions and skill, which has defined her, defined her sports career. Along with being recognized Player of the Year, Ava secured a well-deserved place as All-Southwest League's first team and was a major contributing factor to the Wildcats' top finish in the Southwest League Conference. The Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Hill would like to recognize Ava on this amazing accomplishment and commend her and her dedication to her team and to her sport. Congratulations on being named the 2023 Southwest League Softball Player of the Year, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Congratulations. Next up, we have the Colorado High School Mountain Bike State Championship Placers. And Director Lima is going to announce those.
In late October, the Colorado High School Mountain Bike State Championship unfolded in Glenwood Springs, where the Grand Valley Youth Cycling High School Mountain Biking Team impressively qualified 29 riders from three schools for the state competition. With 27 riders competing, they navigated a rigorously demanding and technically challenging course, effectively handling their nerves and embracing the heightened competition. Each cyclist performed exceptionally, demonstrating a commendable level of determination as they raced from the beginning to end in a highly competitive field. The Grand Junction High School Cycling Team persevered, clinching the third-place spot on the podium for Division II. Also placing third individually in the sophomore division was Alma McGowan. Success in these competitions demand the ability to handle pressure with composure, and the student athletes showcased remarkable determination and poise. Coach Jeff Williams led the team to his achieve, to this achievement, emphasizing the collective grit and composure under pressure, along with a culture of support and mentorship. The Board of Education and Superintendent Hill would like to recognize the Grand Junction High School Cycling Team for their outstanding athletic talent and congratulate them on a well-deserved recognition. So if you come up as I read your name, this is the ones that we know are here. If there's anybody else that snuck in, let me know, and I'll be sure to read yours as well. Benjamin Garmoni. Jonathan Asbell. Ty Gardner. Owen Hoffman. Cade Gardner. John Kamizki. Evan Pipkin. Porter Landis. Daniel Lawrence.
And I think Coach Williams is here too, isn't he? You have to come up. You have to come up.
Alright, congra, well, do you want to read the rest of the names? And then, gentlemen, if you can, you'll just, if you can sit down, and then after the last recognition, she'll take your picture in the lobby, but Angela's going to read the rest of the team's names.
Coach, will you come over here and help me with a couple of these? Riley Grimes. Scarlett Hardy. Alma McGowan. Beck Sharp. Benian Sharp. Talon Hoffman. Juliet Berry. Megan Stidell. Elijah Meyer. Max Shu. Mason.
Zanamnichek.
Now you know why I brought him up here. Weston Hildebrandt. Kira Finney. Kira? Kyra? Riley Grimes. We did that one, and we did that one. Perfect. Congratulations to you all.
Congratulations. Alright, and then our next recognition is the Dinosaur Ridge Science Quiz Bowl Tournament winners, and Dr. Schultes is going to do those recognitions.
Alright, will the following people please join me at the front of the room? Cody, Coach Cody Chocraft, Sam Gudat, Alexander Chang, Anna Stone Ewing, and Carter Reynolds. You're good. The Grand Junction High School Academic A-Team placed first at the Dinosaur Ridge Science Quiz Bowl Tournament for the second year in a row, which took place in late October at Colorado School of Mines. Eighteen teams from across Colorado high schools competed in the tournament, answering multiple rounds of quiz questions regarding geology, paleontology, anatomy, and general science. The top three teams advanced to the final round after a rigorous 30 questions. Grand Junction won with 13 answers over Stargate High School with eight, and the Classical Academy with four. Each of these four students will receive a $500 scholarship towards higher education under the strong leadership and guidance of Coach Cody Chocraft, sorry, Coach Cody Chocraft. These students continue to excel in both academics and extracurricular activities. This accomplishment is a testament to the tremendous effort, hard work, and time they've invested. The countless hours dedicated to rigorous practice, diligent studying, and meticulous preparation have created continued success, two years in a row, showcasing their commitment to knowledge and achievement. The Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Hill would like to recognize the hard work of these students, both in and out of the classroom, and would like to congratulate them on this accomplishment. Well done. Okay, Anna Stone Ewing, Carter Reynolds, Sam Gudat, and Alexander Chang. Great job.
We'd also like to thank all the principals and parents that came out to show support for their students, so let's give them a round of applause as well. Alrighty, so unless you're just chomping at the bit to stay for the rest of our meeting, we will give you all several minutes to go ahead and exit out to the lobby. Cycling team, don't forget to get with Cali for your picture. So thank you all for coming to the meeting for the recognitions, and well done, students. So we have lots of seats at the front now, if anybody wants to move forward. And remember, there's Kate at the back, so feel free to help yourself at any time. Alrighty, I think they're, they're all there. Alright, so we are going to move on to our board reports. So just like in our schools, when we do, we are doing the Capturing Kids' Hearts, the teachers will ask the kids good things that happen, so the board is emulating that. So board, do you have any good things, whether it's board-related or life-related, that you want to share?
We had our second community meeting for the master's facility plan. That went really well, and looking forward to just continue to work on that to get all the information together that we need.
Great.
For me, Dr. Hill got to be our honorary captain for coin toss for the kid's Super Bowls last weekend. There were some good Super Bowls that went on, so we had a lot of 10U, 12U, and 14U championships, and he was our honorary coin toss. Did a good job out there. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Good job. Are you a professional coin tosser? Director Lima and I were able to go do a walkthrough of Grand Junction High School. So it'd been a, it'd been a while, and now there's actually walls up, and it was great to see the better lay of the land, so things are coming along rather quickly. It's pretty exciting to see how it's shaping up. Alright. Okay, any committee or activity updates from the board? I know it's been kind of quiet lately, so, alright. Alright, we are ready for D-51 happenings and celebrations. We will get it up there.
Hello, board. I'm Sierra Coulson, the Marketing and Communication Specialist for District 51 Schools, and I'm excited to share with you the District 51 happenings and celebrations for the month of November.
We'll see if he has to do it.
It doesn't seem to be. There we go. Okay. To begin November's Golden Apple Award winner is Diane Chanaman. She was nominated for her incredible 25 years of hard work as a teacher in District 51. Throughout her years of learning and teaching, she has adapted to new technologies, new families, new leadership. There is one thing that has remained true: Do your job, be kind to others, be a good human, and do what's right even when no one is looking, Diane says. Thank you, Mrs. Thank you, Mrs. Chaneman, for being an outstanding educator, and congratulations on winning a Golden Apple Award. Pear Park Elementary School-- or Pear Park Elementary's playground was vandalized a few weeks ago, resulting in extensive damage and needing to complete renovation. What started as a school wanting to help another school rebuild its playground turned into a district-wide fundraiser. Over 15 schools came together in this effort, and students who paid $1 were allowed to wear their hats for a full day. All donations were given to Pear Park. Over $3,000 has been raised, and with even more donations continuing to come in. While we're on the topic of playgrounds, New Emerson Elementary hosted a bake sale for Wingate Elementary. This bake sale was to fundraise for accessible playground equipment at Wingate that would allow all students to play, to enjoy playtime at recess. Both Pear Park and Wingate are seeking to raise thousands of dollars for the upgrades to their playground equipment. Thank you to the leadership at these schools for fostering an environment where all students feel a sense of belonging. Last year, Chapita Elementary School was honored with Governor Jared Polis's Math Bright Spot Award, acknowledging its outstanding academic progress despite the challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. This prestigious award granted to only 13 schools statewide came with a $50,000 prize, which Chapita used to build a makerspace. A makerspace is a collaborative workspace for students to learn, make, and share ideas. Thank you Principal Chiro and Paralibrarian Ashley Bambino for advancing student learning. Four of District 51's high schools competed in the Colorado Bandmasters Association Western Regional Competition, where they all placed to move on to the state competition. Congratulations to Central Fruta Monument, Grand Junction, and Palisade High Schools for competing and representing D-51 schools poetically. It's official, Project Search, District 51's newest transition program for students with disabilities, had its ribbon cutting in early November at Community Hospital. Project Search provides real-life work experience with training and independent living skills to help young adults with disabilities make successful transitions to productive adult life. Each student will have the opportunity to intern with two different departments throughout Community Hospital. We celebrated National School Psychology Week from November 6 through 10, and took the time to thank our school psychologists, reflect on taking care of our mental health, and support others. Can we take a quick second to give our school psychologists another round of applause for all they do? They not only play a crucial role in supporting our students, schools, and staff, but also in fostering a positive and inclusive environment where everyone feels a sense of belonging. On November 6, District 51 hosted our first Strong Schools, Strong Community Luncheon, a collaborative event that brought together various community stakeholders with D-51 staff. The event was student-centered and featured an exciting welcome by the Fruta Monument Drum Line and Orchard Avenue Student Leadership Team. Throughout the luncheon, the Grand Junction High School Jazz Band, Palisade High School Choir, and Central High School Theater showcased the remarkable talents of our D-51 students. Superintendent Dr. Hill concluded the event with a comprehensive State of the District address, addressing the challenges facing our school district and the opportunities that lay ahead. This event would not have been possible without the support and sponsorship of Dr. Angela Christensen and the D-51 Foundation. Thank you for making it your mission to support our students and our staff. All four comprehensive D-51 high schools had athletes who participated in the National Letter of Intent and National Signing Day. It's a day worth celebrating for our D-51 students as they made their commitment to play collegiate sports. Congratulations and good luck to every one of our student athletes as they prepare themselves for their future. You are D-51. And finally, November 11 signifies Veterans' Day, a day to honor the men and women who've served, fought, and sacrificed for our country. At Lincoln Orchard Mesa Elementary, they have been celebrating our community's veterans for over 10 years. Thanks to Carmel Wilson and her son for starting this tradition. Each year, teachers, staff, and students make breakfast to share with veteran groups around the community as a thank you to all who have served and those who are still serving. That's all we have for November. Thank you for helping us spend some time shouting out our amazing students, staff, and schools.
Do we have any veterans in the room here tonight? Could you raise your hand or stand up?
in year two of our three-year strategic plan, and so our goal is each month to give an
Thank you. Let's give a round of applause to our veterans.
update to the board on a different priority area within that strategic plan.
All right, thank you, Sierra.
So this month, that's why we're hearing from our community partnerships folks.
All right, we are now ready for our superintendent report.
All right. So I stalled long enough for it to work, I think. We have three items this evening. The first one is a strategic plan update from our community partnerships group, so I'll have them come up and share now.
All the technology is like taking a break, so.
There you go. All right, well, thank you so much for having us here tonight on the Community Partnership Task Force members. I'm pleased to introduce the folks who are up here and also working on all of this. My name's Angela Christensen. I'm the Executive Director of the School District 51 Foundation. We also have Andrea Bolton with us tonight. And joining us this evening is Kenneth Valentine, who will be doing a presentation a little later on. In addition, we're also joined by Beau Tobin, Candace Carnahan, Jody Deers, Raul de Vieja Decker, Tricia Giolanza, Eric Ward, Tabitha Britt, Christina Burnham, Ressi Barrett, Jessica Burford, Stephen Martinez, Kayla Brown, Jared Burdick, Kayla Wetzel, and Tracy Gallegos. So as you can see, we have a very robust group of folks that are involved in the school district, but also involved in the community. As you know, our strategic purpose is to identify and communicate strategic partnerships with organizations and institutions in the community to support the advancement of the school district's strategic plan and initiative. Last week, as it was already highlighted and mentioned, many of you experienced our Strong Schools, Strong Community Luncheon that brought together 175 community partners, key business leaders, who know and value the key role that public schools play throughout the community. Dr. Hill gave his State of the District address, updating our community on our celebrations, and sharing where we can use a little more support. We've never hosted an event like this, and it's truly a tangible way to see how we are operationalizing our strategic plan.
While all of our community partnership efforts are important to the advancement of the district's strategic goals and initiatives, we have been tasked specifically to focus on the following areas: Student opportunities for career-connected learning; wellness and supports beyond the classroom for staff and students; and engaging with families and deepening relationships. Tonight, we wanted to start with a couple of celebrations from last year in our progress of the strategic plan. Our focus area brought together key community partners, and several had the chance to speak about how they support District 51. These included presentations from the Grand Junction Chamber of Commerce, Riverside Education Center, the D-51 Foundation, Mesa County Workforce Center, our PTA at Wingate Elementary, and TOPE Family and Community Partnerships. We'd also like to celebrate the creation of our Community Partnership Tracking Tool, which includes over 200 partnerships and continues to grow. It's a pretty data-filled tool, as you can see, and we're working on some organization of it. We really like the family partnerships one because of all the great colors. We are really proud of this work, but now we want to ensure that we're maximizing its Our goal for this year is to identify new and existing partnerships to support student and educator wellness, student career readiness, and family support. As a reflection of our year-one strategic goals and progress, we realized we had a gap in representation for our student and educator wellness on our community task force.
So in October, we met with our community action team to solicit feedback from all of them on how to really operationalize to get to the next steps. And with input from our action team, we generated the following committees. Our first committee is our PTO/PTA Lunch and Learn Committee. Our second-- well, after input from our school board presentation last April, and specifically at Vice President Jones's suggestion, this team will be responsible for organizing a PTO/PTA Lunch and Learn this spring to share about the strategic plan and our focus groups' work. And in addition to that, just connect our PTO/PTA contacts, resources, ideas, and truly opportunities for some collaboration between those organizations. The next group action team that we have is our Community Partner Tracking Tool Committee, and this committee will be responsible for reviewing the tool and maximizing its usability. The next committee will be the Marketing Committee, and this committee will be responsible for creating and sharing a menu of opportunities for business and organizations for future engagement possibilities. And the last group is our Staff and Student Wellness Committee, and this committee will be responsible for making key connections with community partners and look for opportunities to collaborate in D-51 and highlighting staff and student wellness. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce Kenneth Valentine with Mind Springs Health, and he'll give you a brief overview of how Mind Springs Health partners with School District 51.
Great. I want to say thank you for the invitation, Angela and Andrea. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the board and with Dr. Hill and everyone else. I am Ken Valentine. I'm a program coordinator at Mind Springs Health. I actually lead the school-based mental health programming, as well as multi-systemic therapy. The vision for Mind Springs Health is one of creating healing breakthroughs for the mind, for the body, and for the spiritual well-being. This is our strategic vision. It's what we are going to get behind these next three years, and that includes how we're building out new partnerships within the community, as well as with District 51 specifically. Also, as part of this vision, we're developing and implementing a variety of new child and family programming. So multi-systemic therapy, we have launched officially in the community, and we're excited to have done that. And then we also have early childhood mental health consulting and training that we're launching within early childhood centers and also working more directly with families. In addition, we have a renewed connection with D-51 leadership, and I think this is what we're probably most proud of here recently and kind of building out. And that includes participating with a variety of the strategic initiatives, such as the community partners, the family partnerships, and then the wellness advisory. We also look forward to an ongoing, bolstered partnership with D-51 and working together to provide the community-based opportunities for students and families to thrive. So thank you again.
We look forward to year two of operationalizing the strategic plan in this vital area of continuing to pursue and highlight our engaged and supportive community partners. Thank you for all of your time tonight and for having us. Any questions?
Board, any questions? That was great. It's great to see all the next steps that you guys have taken from the first time that we heard, just sort of in its infancy, and creating it. That tracking tool looks amazing, and we've got more people that you're bringing all together, so, well done. This is exciting to see.
I have a quick question. So about the goal being to identify new and existing partnerships, seems like the tool has been an opportunity to really lock down the existing partnerships. What-- and it sounds like we have a bunch of new initiatives. What kind of steps are we taking to pursue new partnerships, or what does that side look like?
So part of that is our marketing subcommittee that's going to be working on that. And so one of the efforts that we're launching is a menu of opportunities and ways to engage with D-51. And that'll look like, really, we're kind of playing with this idea of some window clings that would be a way to honor our current partners and include a QR code and kind of a call to action for people to get involved with D-51, and that would digitally link them to that menu of opportunities. And then they can connect with us through that digital tool. And then in addition, bringing on additional partners to our community task force, we're actually creating a bigger network map through the work that our larger committee is doing to identify some resources that maybe we have missed in our tracking tool.
Thank you all. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Next, I'm going to invite up President Marshall Brigetta from CMUTech, and Sherri Taylor, who oversees our college and career readiness, to give an overview of our partnership that we have with them around our BOSEs and concurrent enrollment programs. And so appreciate them being here this evening.
That's Super Bowl champion, John Marshall.
Father of--
I guess now that you mention it, succeeded in that game. Members of the school board, thank you so much for having us. Brigetta, Sherri really do the bulk of the work of this partnership, and I thought what I might do is do a quick refresher on how we got here. And that is, if you go back to the early '90s, there was, I think, some community leaders who saw an opportunity, and that opportunity was, how do we take a model that is elsewhere in Colorado and improve upon it? And I'll give you an example. Some of our front-range districts will have a technical college, they'll have a career and vocational programming within their school district, and right down the road, they'll have another community college and a four-year. What we have in this community is something that works a whole lot better and is a whole lot more efficient with our tax dollars, and that is only of its kind in Colorado, K-12 higher ed BOSEs. And that BOSEs, we'd start off by just giving you a quick refresher there. That BOSEs is made up of some of our board, some of your board, some of the business members of the community, and what they do is they help us really try and make sure that we are providing our students in this community the absolute best and most responsive options in the career, technical, vocational fields. Rather than building out your own welding and machining shops in the high schools, rather than building out an entire auto or diesel program or electric lineman program--
Brigetta, Sherry really do the bulk of the work of this partnership. And I thought what I might do is, is do a quick refresher on how we got here. And that is, if you go back to the early '90s, there was, I think, some community leaders who saw an opportunity. And that opportunity was, how do we take a model that is elsewhere in Colorado and improve upon it? And I'll give you an example. Some of our front-range districts will have a, a technical college. They'll have a career and vocational programming within their school district. And right down the road, they'll have another community college and a four-year. What we have in this community is, is something that works a whole lot better and, and is a whole lot more efficient with our tax dollars. And that is only of its kind in Colorado, K-12 higher ed BOCs. And that BOCs, I thought we'd, we'd start off by just giving you a quick refresher there. That BOCs is made up of some of our board, some of your board, some of the business members of the community. And what they do is they help us really try and make sure that we are providing our students in this community the absolute best and most responsive options in the career, technical, vocational fields. Rather than building out your own welding and machining shops in the high schools, rather than building out an entire auto or diesel program or electric lineman program or the like, we share that together. And then, instead of running two or three sections that are a third or half-full, we're able to gain those efficiencies. And the, the economics of that, I think, are fairly straightforward. But the opportunities for our students is maybe what we really want to focus on today. If you look at the growth and progress over time and the conversation about concurrent more broadly is probably a topic in and of itself for another night. But for tonight, I would just simply point out to you that you've got really some remarkable growth happening, both in the new areas of PTEC where our students can earn in the entirety of an associate's degree or credential before they leave high school at no cost to them. Or whether they're simply gaining a little bit of confidence and a little bit of momentum before they leave high school by getting a taste of some of the trades and technical education that maybe they weren't aware they had a real aptitude and passion for. What's clear is that the trades and technical programs are ascendant, and there's more demand, both in the economy and more demand, I think, among our parents and our students. I'm going to pause for just a quick moment and let Brigetta talk about this, this particular slide, because I think it's, it's really helpful, especially if you kind of have to take the COVID blip out of it as best you can. But, but to see the broader view of the credentials and the credit hours that are earned.
President Marshall, so, if you can imagine about 15 years ago, none of the high school students were getting college credit. It was just elective credit at the high schools. And where you see the huge uptick is in the last, let's say, five years, and couldn't have been done.
Is your mic? Maybe just the mic.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Just so that we're not interrupting our presenters, if, if you can't hear or something, please come up and speak to our board secretary just so that we're not throwing our guests off. Thank you.
And so, truly with the partnership, I mean, Sherry is amazing. And so, I can call her and say, let's do PTEC. We thought we'd have 15 students. I think we have 180 now in the last three years, getting their associates. And you can just see, even right today, we're at 5,500 credit hours for the whole academic year, and we have not even enrolled students till January for tech scholars. So, because of the partnership, because of everybody working really hard to make this happen, you're seeing students leave with technical certificates and associate's degrees out of high school. And then, on the bottom, you'll see that that's all the concurrent. That's whether they're in high school, at CMU, at CMU Tech, or doing their PTEC, and it's just been a remarkable experience. And then, we did this start about in 2012. We started summer camps with one camp, 20 kids. Now, we do about 80 to 100 camps. Really allows them to understand what at least they don't like, which is really important. And between the district and CMU, we have scholarship these students back and forth over the years, and this year we'll be pushing it out into Clifton as well. So, thank you.
For the last piece, I know we're, we're relatively tight on time, and I want to leave more time for Q and A, but I do want to point out a couple of things. One is, we are abundantly clear that moving forward, the health of our region, the health of our community really is tied one-to-one with our ability to give our students opportunities. And the truth is, if the majority of our community does not have an experience post-secondary, no kind of technical vocational training, no kind of college, well, then the reality is that we've got to change that dynamic on the front end. We've got to help students and families see that as being possible. We've got to see a path at a, at a younger age. And the research is really clear on this. If a student, by the time they're in middle school, isn't aware of those opportunities, it becomes increasingly unlikely, like precipitously so, that they just don't pursue it. So, one of the things that we have been pursuing is this idea of becoming Mavericks, and we'll show you a couple of, of these. But, but really, I'd like to highlight this for you because I think this, this is an effort that we are heading into each of the elementary schools and really trying to provide these students with an opening of the aperture, if you will, about what's possible for their future. Is there a video embedded in that? Just is clicking back. That's all right. We can send that to you later. John, can you speak into the mic? She can't hear you.
We have technology stuff that she could use.
Yeah, I'm happy to try and speak up just a little bit. So, it sounds like that video's not going to go for us. But what, what you'll see in this video, and I'm happy to share this with you after the, after your meeting concludes, is a former student at TOPE who now is a varsity athlete at CMU. Went back, and the TOPE Eagles and the CMU Mavericks got together, and they, our band director helped them create a fight song and sung and danced and really just got those students really excited about this idea of where the TOPE Eagles become Mavericks. And this idea is, for us, really starts to look at this entire region. So, we say, well, what is it if you're a local student? What does that mean for us? And for us, we believe this idea of a CMU promise means that you have an opportunity for a path to a better life. That means an opportunity for post-secondary education and a whole series of things that come along with that. First and foremost is the affordability. So, any student in this region, including this community, whose family makes $65,000 or less, we're going to figure out how to cover tuition. Full stop. And so, this, we know that this barrier has been financial, it's cultural. It's, it's not a simple fix, but if we can start to remove barriers together, we know that that winds up with more students getting an opportunity to pursue something meaningful for their lives. So, what you'll see increasingly, and I want to, I just want to call out a special thanks to Dr. Hill and, and the entire team here, is specific marketing in each one of these high schools, speaking right at the affinity toward each of these areas where our Wildcats become Mavericks, where our Tigers become Mavericks. And this is work that, to be honest with you, we've not spent a ton of marketing dollars in the past in this community, and that is going to change. You're going to see us increasingly spending dollars highlighting people like Colton. Colton's a Fruit of Monument grad. He was able to earn his electric lineman program while he was still in high school. And so, those students can look up and see those Fruit of Monument grads gaining in their career. This is Chloe. She's a drum major for us, remarkable young lady. And you can see there, she's a Palisade Bulldog. So, you'll see that these familiar faces for students increasingly becoming part of the cornerstone of the marketing that, that is happening and spending that's happening in digital and elsewhere that's really, again, built around this idea of a partnership where we're trying to make sure that students in this region know they've got a pathway, they can afford it, and we can help them figure out how to make it possible. So, that's a little about what's happening. And the last piece I'll point out is these career and college advisors. This has been a joint effort with District 51 and CMU and CMU Tech over the last number of years, where we've embedded people to just simply support our juniors and seniors trying to figure out what happens after high school. And these folks are simply there as an additive resource for our students. And increasingly, I think, you'll see them paying attention to things like career, technical, vocational opportunities and doubling down on this idea that college doesn't have to mean a four-year degree. It can look a lot of different ways for different students. The idea here is that we're providing pathways to every single student, that we get them what they can in high school and then beyond. So, with that, I think, we'd like to pause. I know between what, what Sherry and Brigetta are doing, we could probably talk for a long time, much longer than you have allotted on your agenda. But I do want to pause and entertain any questions you might have.
And while you're asking questions, I think Jacob's going to come out and swear. I think he accidentally pulled the PDF up, so we'll try to get the video before we go.
No problem.
Questions?
I just have a quick one. So, if we're already at, what did you say, 5,500-ish credit hours so far? What do you think we're going to end up the year with? Come on, Brigetta, just throw, throw something sweet out there.
Well, I've been pushing them to get 6,000.
Okay.
Nice.
But it's going, it's, it's tough.
Sure.
We'll see.
If we're, if we're already that far above what last year's total was, the halfway mark, so impressive. It's really exciting. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
So, yes, I agree. Thank you all for your hard work. What do we think accounts for that difference? What changed this year or last year? It looks like, well, I guess both. I guess, what did change this year? Then I have a question about last year.
I think if, if you look at the, it's been 14% increase, 20% increase, 10% increase. So, it's, it's more about, I think, the partnership gets tighter and tighter. I think we are valuing each student's time there more. So, used to be, you might be there for two years and get 12 credits. Now, you have a complete certificate at maybe 20. So, I think it's, this wouldn't happen, I believe this, without this partnership. If it was just a school down the road, and you can go there if you want, it's, it would be a completely different concept than busing students there, helping them get there, Sherry coming up and saying, can we do some extra supports? We're, us doing those things, I think that really helps.
Yeah, it probably turned off.
We've also implemented some things, like, I went to Brigetta, and I said, you know, we have some concerns with our students' failure rate, which means then they're not getting credit. And so, wonderfully, they did a, they quickly adjusted and are giving us a heads-up, and so then we can notify kids and parents. And so, that's leading towards students being successful early on. We also realized that there was a lot of students who were missing that the sophomore year, we take them all to tour CMU Tech. Well, a lot of kids, for various reasons, were not available and able to go to that. So, we've added some junior year, senior year. At any time, CMU Tech, there's somebody there that's willing to tour the students around and show them everything that there is to offer because we really don't want to leave any student out at any time. We have students who move into us late, and there's just a lot of reasons why kids miss it. And so, we've really, anytime that there's an issue, Brigetta and I just kind of get together and brainstorm, and they've been great partners with helping us problem solve for our students.
Dr. Schultes, I would also submit that there's been two, in addition to the commitment that you all have made to try and provide students with these opportunities, our Board of Trustees has also made, I think, two, two key moves. One was reducing the tuition out there, using the first estate gift, meaningful estate gift our university's ever received, and plugging that right back into a place we thought could be the most impactful by reducing that tuition. And the second was going through this process of really talking to students and families about what used to be known as WCCC. And what we found was that a lot of stu, a lot of parents and families and community members simply didn't know it existed, didn't know what it was, if they did know existed. And so, I think that rebranding around CMU Tech has also given us a little bit of wind in our back. The, the video we started with, with your superintendent impressively climbing an electric lineman pole on his first try, when our lineman instructor was not quite ready for him to do so, was... You know, I mean, it's, it's, all these things are additive in making sure that our, our parents and families and community members, our, our businesses, our chamber, our GJEF, the city, all, all of these economic development partners are aware that these programs exist, they're affordable or at no cost to students, and, and they provide a dramatic pathway toward a better life in terms of your ability to provide for your family. So, I think, I, I'm not sure you could give any one silver bullet at it, but I do think these things are cumulative in the sense of, you know, starting to create real momentum.
Thank you for that. One quick follow-up. So, looking at the, you know, $3 million in savings for the community from these programs, kind of the other side, do we have an understanding of, I don't know how you would get at these data, but do we have an understanding of who wouldn't have gone on to post-secondary education, but we, but we had an opportunity for them in this program?
Pulling some of that data together. It's hard to tell who would or wouldn't.
Yeah.
But we do know that the students that are taking concurrent courses have a 57% to 63% chance of continuing on.
Okay.
We also have partnered with Cali Dole Mesa University, and we have part of the Trio Program, which helps our first-generation students in an upward-bound program. And so, we have several people that work with our first-generation students at Central High School and Grand Junction High School. And most of those students have said they would definitely not have even considered going on without this program. And we just celebrated First Generation Student Week last week. And so, I know Kelly and Sierra are getting, you know, we have quotes that are getting together because a lot of those students, it never really even crossed their mind to go on to some sort of a higher ed or training program.
You know, the only thing I would maybe add to that, Dr. Schultes, is the, the overall rates of going on to any kind of post-secondary, I think, indicate to us that there is a, a significant population, and we can argue over what that means, but a non-inconsequential population that is but for some kind of an opportunity, that we can get them some momentum in high school, they're simply not going on to anything, right? Not cosmetology, not truck driving, not university, not anything. And so, it does seem to me that every single student that we are able to get interested in a trade within their high school timeframe, within that envelope of opportunities, it does feel to me that that is truly additive and not, not sort of a zero-sum game among students in terms of their overall, yeah, pursuit of post-secondary.
One follow-up I had to that, which, again, I, I know you said there's no one silver bullet, but do you feel that, obviously, a lot of times getting students there means that you actually need to get the information to the parents? And my own personal experiences is, two years ago, my son graduated in 2022, and I wish I would have known then what I know now, which I now am using that with my daughter, who graduates this year. And, but I do feel even in my, you know, the experience of the last two years, I feel like I'm hearing more about it just in the community at large. And so, I just, you know, one of my follow-ups is, do you feel that, obviously, getting the information to the parents so the parents can help encourage the student, get them there, know what's going on? Do you feel like that has gotten better here in the last couple of years, which is why we might obviously see some of that uptick as well, knowing that what opportunities their student could have? Because I think it's hard to know what job you want when you're 16 or 17. And so, sometimes you are just try, you're, you're testing the waters with some things, which I think these programs are great to explore what you like and what you don't like. So, what are your thoughts around that parental piece?
I think that's huge. That is, you know, I know that we've been doing quite a bit trying to get as much information about all of the opportunities that we have for our students, but it is the parents because we announce it to the kids. We talk, you know, but then, you know, something happens, and they go home and they forget to even mention it. And so, that has definitely been a big push of, on both, you know, we hold a lot of information parent nights at CMU Tech or CMU or at our high schools. We try to do it at a variety of locations for as many of our families to learn about it as possible.
That's great. So, my daughters, and we did the summer camp some years ago when she was at middle school. So, she did the baking camp, which was, she thoroughly enjoyed with her friend. And then, when we attended, I guess, the CMU Tech's Back to School Night, it was absolutely packed with the amount of students. I was really impressed. And by the way, she's really enjoying her classes because she really wanted to graduate last year because she was sort of done with all of it. But now, this is kind of a renewed interest in education, and she's enjoying her classes there very much. So, I think that's a real benefit for kids who, I think, sometimes lose a little bit of interest in school, too, is sometimes they just need that change or they need to see that there's something after the life of high school and the life of K-12. So, I, I just think this is a really neat opportunity that, that's, we have partnered here.
President Heitz, I appreciate you sharing that personal story because I, and every time I hear a parent describe that they're not aware of what's available to, for their students, whether it's at CMU Tech or more broadly in concurrent and post-secondary, I think it, the, the challenge in encouragement for all of us is, I think, in I think it, the, the challenge in encouragement for all of us is, I think, in humility, we have got to continue to grow and get better in terms of our ability to communicate with parents and help them see pathways for their students, and there is a whole lot of them. So our hope is that as we continue to both partner with you all and, and we're going to spend some dollars on this, try to be relevant in, in this for, for parents, and make it simpler for them to both find it and sign up for it. I think we can grow and get better in those areas as well. There are little process things that I think together we can improve at. But those are, to me, those are encouragements. Those are not barriers so much as, they're, they're just part of the work ahead for us to get better and be more relevant to parents.
Well, I, I like that you guys are, like, that you mentioned, we've really got to target kids like 7th and 8th grade. Because by, honestly, by the time we even get to like 9th grade, we've got, right, we've got, there's just, we're a little bit behind there. And I think it's exciting that because we are, the way our community works and we're fairly tight-knit, I'm excited to actually see the video because I think it, the more awareness we can bring to parents at that elementary age, where parents tend to be a little bit more highly involved, mostly because you, you are their main transportation back and forth, at least until middle school. But that part just creates that connection, I think, for parents that, oh, CMU's there and what can we do? And hopefully that, I think, even propels more awareness.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, anecdotally, I, when I meet with my student advisory groups, I've been asking them intentionally their view around concurrent. And I feel like the narrative's been shifting around that too. And, and not that they've, you know, are bashing AP or anything else, but I think students are starting to realize the value in these college courses while they're in high school. And I've seen that shift as well. So I think that probably has a lot to do with the, the marketing and the shifting to CMU Tech, but just the more and more we talk about it, the more the students will recognize it. And we have space for more kids to be able to take advantage of these opportunities. And so the more we can get it out into the community, I think, the better, so.
Well, and I think the more, the more kids that they know a friend or family member that's taken it, then it's, it's not that unknown, right? It's, it's, it's a little easier, like, you don't feel like that gap is too far to bridge. And so I think the more students we have go through it, I think it's just going to kind of pull more along to say, oh, yeah, I did this, or did you know that you could do that? And so I think it's, I think it will beget more and more students being aware of it and wanting to participate. And as a parent, I love that D-51 pays for it. I'm just going to give that plug to our community, that if you don't want to have to pay for it, D-51. And the Ascent Program for fifth year, if your student is right on there, that is a great program as well, to be able to get your students in and could, like you said, likely get a certificate or have a lot, a lot of credits under their belt that, that D-51 will have paid for.
Yeah, and the, and the transportation, hopefully, is helpful too. I know it can be hard when you have a high school schedule sometimes to try to make it work, but just having those buses run three times a day is also a benefit for getting kids that don't have transportation, so.
And I, I would just maybe recapitulate this conversation around the fact, none of this, in my humble estimation, would be thriving in the way it is without the partnership that we have. And so I, I would just continue to say, thank you for your partnership. We are committed to it. We're glad to have you as a, a community partner to make this available for our students. Okay.
Yeah, let's watch that video.
This is, okay, give it a try. Maybe we're missing some audio. I think our, I think our friends are going to need to give us some audio if. Yeah?
There we go.
There we go. All right, let's try one more time here.
We feel so fortunate to just, in proximity, be close to CMU. And our kids, I think it's really critical for them to see. In fact, one of our alumni is here as a softball player. And it's important for them to see that they have that potential and also to make those connections with athletes and be part of this community together.
I was once a top eagle and now I'm a CMU Maverick. And it's so great being back here, seeing all the kids and being able to interact with all of them. I think it's so important as a CMU Maverick, especially a student athlete, to be able to engage with the community and show everybody what we can do and like what the college represents. And I think that's a really cool thing that we got to do today.
I think the significance is seeing that they have a future, whether it is in athletics, whether it is in the engineer department. I mean, it's really about letting them see the potential that they have within and make connections. And I love the focus of today, that it's about love. Oftentimes, love feels funny to elementary kids because we think it's about relationships and boyfriends and girlfriends and such, but it is more, and it is about loving humanity.
So we've, we've got those programs happening in every elementary. We've been through several already and more on the horizon. And just, again, an opportunity to start to begin that conversation with elementary school kids at the earliest of ages, that there's a pathway, it's possible, and we can help, so.
Well, thank you all for your work on it. We appreciate all that you do as well. So thanks for presenting this evening.
Thank you.
All right, and our last presentation this evening on the SOPS report is the, an update on the Long Range Facility Master Plan. I believe we have our folks on virtually.
Good save.
It's close. And, and then Clint's here as well, in person.
Just remember, we have cake in the back, so if anybody would like to have some cake, please help yourself.
None of you can leave without taking a big wedge of cake.
Yeah, we're not taking it home.
None of you. Yes, you too, John, you have to eat cake.
Carrie has to take it all home.
Good evening, Board. We ready? All right, so just an update tonight on the Long Range Facilities Master Plan. We've got on camera, we've got Lynn Eller. I think it's just you tonight, Lynn, is that right?
I'm Matt here too.
Oh, and Matt, okay, great. We're just going to give you guys an update on where we're at in the process. So I'll talk a little bit about the meetings that we've had and the assessments and how they're going so far. So with that, Lynn, I will let you take it away.
Thank you very much. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, please.
One more second here.
Perfect.
Great. Okay, everybody can see that, I hope.
We got you.
Thanks for giving us some time tonight. My name is Lynn Eller. I'm a principal with HCM. I didn't get to join in last month's update or last time's update with Matt. But I've been working with Matt all along on, on this effort. And we wanted to just join you tonight and give you an update, like Clint said, on, on where we are and where we're headed. We've been making some exciting progress with our planning committee and also on our school assessments. And so just wanted to show you where we are with those. So I'll quickly review our process and then give updates for our assessment efforts and our planning committee activities and other things we've been working on with people from your district. So just to get started, as a quick review, we have kind of a four-step process, which we're working through. And, you know, as we move ahead in the process, some of these stages are overlapping others as we move ahead in some areas and, and we're still working on others. But in general, you know, we're almost at the end of this analyze phase, step two, where we have our assessments complete and we have our, we're analyzing the data and getting cost estimates based on our reports on the conditions of the buildings. And then when we move into step three, it'll be where we start to look at moving forward with the master plan, what are our options, what are our packages potentially, and what are our priorities going to be as we look to address some of the issues that we've found so far. And so that's kind of where we are, kind of right down the middle, we're about to step three pretty soon. And that's just an overview. I'm going to show a little bit about our assessment schedule and what's going on. So we pretty much spent July through October doing our building walks and documenting those reports in terms of those conditions and issues. A couple of those have been added on to the scope, including East Middle School was the latest. So there's a few of those that were still kind of, kind of coming in in terms of getting those reports done. Then September and October was spent on a bulk of estimating the elementary schools and some of those conditions that we found. And then right now, our, our partner, FCI Constructors, is estimating middle and high school for the month of November with the target of finishing at the end of this month, followed by a few of the miscellaneous buildings, maybe the district admin buildings that were added towards the end of our, our scheduled walks. And so a few of those still left to wrap up in terms of reporting and cost estimating. Meanwhile, we are evaluating educational adequacy. In other words, aside from conditions or roof leaks or old floors, you know, how useful is a school from a day-to-day basis in terms of, does it have the right-sized spaces and the spaces that it needs? And so we're working on those, and I'll touch again on it a little later in the presentation. But one of those efforts is interviewing each principal at each school to get some feedback on how their facility is working for them. And so that's ongoing as well. We hope to finish by the end of this week, actually, with those interviews. And then finally, December, January, we'll look for the updated pupil, pupil counts and enrollments for this year in order to finish our capacity scores for the schools. So ultimately, looking at all this information, being able to be wrapped together in January once we have the, the three pieces pulled together. And then this is just an example of what we'll see in the report in terms of, each school will be assigned a condition report or a condition score based on, you know, the, basically, the can, the physical condition of the school, educational adequacy, and then utilization. And you've, you've kind of seen this before, but this is our, our plan to get to this point in January. So that's kind of where we are with our assessments. The other thing that's been going on regularly is we've assembled a planning committee and we've met twice so far. Our, our schedule is typically meeting about once a month to give them updates and get feedback on, on some of the things we're working on. So that committee had its second meeting last Thursday night. The first one is in October. The first one, we did a lot of brainstorming on goals and priorities and what we wanted to get out of this master plan. And then the second one, we kind of circled back and revisited those goals and, and refined them a little bit and talked a little bit more about priorities. The third meeting is scheduled for December 14th, so a month from now. We'll be out to, to meet again and, and give some updates then. But one of the things we've done is deliberately met at a different school and we will continue to do this through the process so that people on the committee are able to get a grasp of some of the newer schools versus some of the mid-range or older schools and, and what amenities are present at each throughout the district. And so we'll continue to do that. We did, done Monument Ridge and Pear Park and seen those spaces. We'll move on to middle schools next, I think. Guiding Principles has been a project for the planning committee so far. We had a draft last month that talked about a long-term and updatable roadmap. We wanted to involve every community. We felt that it was important to have safe, flexible, and durable learning environments. And we wanted to equip, equip students with career choices that engage the local economy. We did spend some time refining and clarifying those and adding more detail on Thursday. So right now, these have, have, have turned into more of a set of bullet point adjective principles. And so a lot of the same ideas, but we elaborated a little on prioritizing safety, flexibility, schools that are durable and efficient, accessible by the community, and then a plan that is clear and a plan that has a feasible financial strategy that can be updated on a regular basis. And so this is refined a bit and, and pulled together from, from last Thursday's meeting. And we'll revisit these and probably tweak them a little bit more as we. Other thing we looked at while we're working on assessing educational adequacy is we defined these categories of what it takes to make a good school. In other words, quality learning environment, are the acoustics and the lighting good in the classrooms, ranging all the way to, do we have the spaces that we need for special ed and therapies and reading intervention and special programs like that, even down to building and site safety and, and instructional technology? And so having contemplated these categories as a group, we applied weights in the planning committee meeting to how important each of these are to D-51 schools. And so these weights, as suggested by the committee, will help inform the scores that Matt and I and our team have applied to the schools in terms of priorities. And so, for example, site and building safety issues will be higher priority as well as that quality learning environment, which received a nine. And, and that's about acoustics and lighting and making sure we have that level of good learning environments in the schools. And so we did this exercise at both the elementary school level and the middle high school level. We also asked the committee to prioritize some amenities that we noticed were at some schools but may not be at all schools and how is, and how important are those to the future of, of D-51 facilities? And so those were ranked for elementary schools and also for middle high. And so I think it was a really good, engaging exercise for the committee. Everybody kind of voted on their cell phone, so everybody got an individual say and it kind of gave a compiled result, some of those things we talked about. And the last thing that we've been doing is in between our planning committee meetings, also every month or every couple of weeks, we've been having focus groups. The first one we did was safety and security, and that was a meeting that included Tim Leon, Marco Montez, the district SRO supervisor, Art Smith, who's on the committee, and Jason Tally, among others. And we had an hour or so discussion on some details about safety and security and some of their desires. And future focus groups include academic leadership, sped and ECE leadership, custodial division and maintenance, as well as technology and CTE. And so those will be, we'll, we'll conduct those meetings in between planning committees over the next few, couple of months or few months. Some of the safety and security highlights that we found were priorities in the focus group were improved communications, upgraded security cameras, pretty standard access control and exterior doors, hardening of vestibules and site securing methods, including fencing and, and traffic bollards at, at the front entrance. So those are just a few of the things we discussed as potential priorities for improving schools and establishing equity across the district.
And a lot of these are things that have been implemented on your most recent new buildings. And I think there have been intentionally and on purpose. And, and I think, you know, recognition that, you know, if these can be implemented district-wide, it would significantly positively impact the security at all the schools. So a lot of these aren't necessarily new to the district, but not necessarily implemented district-wide.
And then I touched on it a little before, but we have been talking to as many principals as are willing to share some time with us on their schools. I think we've. I think we've hit about roughly thirty, thirty-two out of forty, or something like that so far. But we did want to give them a chance to have some feedback and some say on how their building works for them. We asked, what would you keep, change, add, or remove about your, your school and campus? And confirmed some space use, confirmed some things were working okay for them, and, and got an understanding of operations during pickup and drop-off, and some of the things that you can't always just show up on-site and observe without living there day-to-day like they do. So, it's been very informative to talk to them for a little while on each school, and definitely has helped impact our, you know, our assessments on the schools. And so, that is a really quick run-through of, of everything that's going on. Now, I will pause and, and see if anybody has questions on what I've talked about.
Thank you. This is Carrie. I have a couple of questions. Thanks for giving us that overview. While you were talking before you got to those educational adequacy slides, I had written a note to myself asking if we could see the rubrics for the assessments, just so we can start to wrap our heads around, before we see the results, we can start to wrap our heads around kind of how things were assessed. So, I was thankful to see these slides, but I was having a hard time understanding them. So, if you look at the educational adequacy, it doesn't matter which one, either the middle high school or the elementary, I guess we can just start at the middle high school. I'm just trying to understand how the bar graph that shows for second, third, through sixth, latest instructional technology, shops and labs, how, do those things relate in colors or in concept? I'll let you get there first. There.
Right. So.
So, how do these two things relate to each other?
The two different graphs are just, well, I'll start by saying that the, the top-right graph is our ask of how important these categories are related to one another in the assessment. Now, in our actual report or our actual format, there are probably eighty to a hundred line items of things we're checking for importance, or for adequacy. And those range from like, are the classrooms provided enough storage? Are the classrooms big enough? All the way down to, are there bike racks on the site? And so, we score those in our assessment as, 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 you know, the experts having visited the site and as school designers. And what I've asked is that the committee provide a weight for the categories of these line items, so that they could say that, yes, the size of a classroom and its acoustic qualities are indeed more important than the ability to park your bike at the school, right? And so, that's really what we were asking with the top-right bar chart, is to give us some relative important weights to apply to our scores in the, in the report. And then, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say thank you for that. And then, how am I supposed to think about what's happening below that?
So, the bar charts to the bottom left are some individual aspects or amenities that we were, our team was specifically curious about. For example, if we went back to the elementary school level, when we came in and started assessing your schools, we learned that you don't have separate art rooms at the elementary level, okay? And so, that's something we often see in schools we design and in other districts. But, we also learned that, you know, it's not as much of a priority in D-51, and it kind of works fine, and a lot of the teachers liked, like it in their room versus having that transition time. And so, what we learned here is some things that we think might belong in an elementary school are not as important as, as other things. And so, we did, you know, learn that the latest instructional technology and small-group pull-out spaces, the top two bars, are indeed important to the teachers and, and the planning committee in the district, even though they might not be present or equal across all the schools.
So, can I ask then, so each of those, so like the, the numbers, the ones numbered, one through seven, they are not color-related to the other figure, they just would happen to fit into one of those categories? And then, are they weighted differently based on the importance of the category? Or what interaction do the importance factors have on these specific metrics?
So, it's, the colors aren't related, and it's not related to the, the upper-right graph. It was two separate polls presented to the group that they answered on their phone. And so, on the bottom left, the, they were simply asked to drag and drop each of these amenities and rank them in order of how important they felt they were to, to a district school, an elementary school in this case. And so, the more people that ranked technology first, the, the, you know, the longer that bar got, and the more importance it was given. In terms of, of, of weight to these, I think there's a little, it doesn't directly go into our assessment, but it will inform a little bit of the planning efforts that come in the master planning effort after the assessment, in terms of what is it important for us to look at adding to, to these schools?
It seems like there would be an opportunity to, to apply weights to them, right? I mean, if we went through the effort of saying, okay, safety is the most important thing, but obviously, safety is nowhere in those one through seven, it seems like there could be an opportunity to, you know, combine those efforts. Otherwise, yeah, there's, they're disjointed, but.
I think a layer, a layer to the master plan, as we, as it moves forward and we start providing some solutions at each of the site, I think there's an aspect that addresses the physical conditions. And I'll just pick on something easy. We have an old roof, it's kind of leaky, we should fix it. So, that becomes a high priority for a future project. Then when we look at the adequacy piece, and we see safety and security as a high priority, we'd be looking at each of the sites and going back to some of the principles of what might be missing at each of the sites. And it could be, we have a lot of exterior doors without card access, and, and that would make the school safer. And so, there's a package of scope that would apply to that adequacy piece. And I think the bottom-left was really related to specific types of, of spaces or amenities. And so, if we looked at small group and pull-out spaces, and number two, we could be looking at, to provide that space within the school would, would require an interior renovation to create that, or, and, and so, there's, there's scope and cost to, to do that. So, it's really identifying what amenities might be missing in the school, and then what would we have to do to the school to provide that amenity? So, I think for us, we were looking at it along those lines. But it, there is definitely correlation between some of the two, of, of an assessment, and I'll use the separate art room as an example. On our, on our matrix, there, there was criteria, does the school have an art room? And we started with no, and you get a score of zero because you don't have one. After understanding we don't want art rooms or need art rooms, we've just eliminated that as a criteria. And so, that's kind of how some of that informs the, the evaluation of the educational adequacy. So, I don't know if that helps, but.
Yeah, it does. I also just would challenge us to think, like, as we're, as we're prioritizing schools and needs and money, it seems like we need a way to be able to translate across categories and not just say, well, that's, if we get to the classroom spaces themselves, then we can do these things to them. But it seems like we, we would want a tool that would allow us to compare, okay, this school has these big safety needs, and that'll cost this much, and how does that relate to a school that doesn't have the safety needs, but the foundation is cracking? You know, like, how do we actually compare across categories? And weighting is a typical way to do that. So, I just wonder if we're, you know, taking that next step.
Yeah.
But I would also love to see.
I understand.
Sorry.
You'd love to see that, what?
The rubrics. I'm sorry, I interrupted. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, we can provide like a, a template example, file that we're using. And I, I think also as the, as we move out of the assessment phase and into the planning phase, in other words, from looking back to looking ahead, I do think you're right. There's, there's a little bit left to become clear about, you know, what packages of, of improvements we need to do. And, and then when we kind of assemble packages, say, safety and security, we understand that those are, are weighted one, and those want to happen sooner versus things like, everybody gets pull-out rooms, might be a lower priority and happen in later phases. So, it's still in progress and, and coming, but I do like the idea of continuing to provide weighted priorities.
So, I mean, and maybe I'm thinking about this all wrong, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that what the overall weight of each building is supposed to be the culmination of? It's, you guys are gonna take educational adequacy plus building adequacy plus all the other aspects you're looking at, and then each school will be weighted with a certain score, depending on like what Dr. Schultes was saying. Some might have better security needs, some might have better educational adequacy, but then that's why there's gonna be a ranking for the school overall, that then breaks down into, yeah, that first slide that we showed, so.
Yeah, you'll be able to see all the scores once we're done. You'll be able to tell at a glance where the buildings.
Then the weight and everything is gonna already be kind of, it's, I guess, the way I'm looking at it is it's already kind of built in, in what you're, in this kind of model that you have, is that, I just, I don't, I, that's the way I'm seeing it, but if that's not the way it is, then I, I'm just wanting clarity.
Weight that we've been talking about tonight, and the weights that were asked about in the planning committee, all, all apply to this middle score of educational adequacy.
Okay, thank you. Director Lima, do you have, you've been sitting on this committee? Have you been sitting in on this one? I didn't know if you, maybe you wanted to add any insights since you've been at the meetings?
Yeah, I think just, just to clarify a little bit for the community, the, the committee looked at these things, and, and it was really just about, you know, what makes sense for D-51 versus maybe what has been priorities, and some of the other schools that they've done this work with. So, for instance, maybe not every school has a separate performance stage, that kind of thing. And so, in looking at everything and working from the guiding principles that were before these slides, this is what the community group came up with as far as what our priorities need to be moving forward, looking, it's about how we're looking at these schools and their educational adequacy, and what is important to this community. So, just to, instead of taking, you know, an overall average of schools in Colorado and what they want, or our schools nationally, and saying, well, this is the norm nationally and what people want, we have so many buildings that it makes, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be scraping and replacing half our buildings or anything like that. So, we have to come up with some way to look at what's important to the community, and then all of the other pieces such as, you know, do we have cracking foundations? When does the roof need to be replaced? Those kinds of things, the health of the building themselves, but then also how, what we find most important for the educational adequacy, so that we know how to prioritize what gets done soonest, or if it even gets, if it can even be on the list of things to get done.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for that information. It's gonna be exciting to see the rest of this information come together and get a report. Thank you all for your work on it.
Good job, Clint.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, board, do you, does everybody need a break? Are we good to kind of roll in? Okay, all right. All right, we are gonna move into audience comments. So, let Amy get the list there. I'll just remind everybody that you have three minutes to come up and speak, and so, there's direct, this light in front of Director Jones, so it'll be green, then yellow, then red. You'll hear a, kind of a short tone when you have thirty seconds, which is just a cue to wrap up, and then a longer tone when your time is up. And if you keep speaking after that time, then you'll get a gentle reminder from Director Jones that your time is up. We also like to remind everybody that, to be mindful of your neighbors, a lot of people are actually trying to listen to what is being said during public comments, so we just ask that you move any side conversations out to the lobby. And then, we just like to remind everybody that this is a time that the board dedicates to hearing the public, and we do encourage everyone to speak. So, Director Jones, we'll call who's on, who's up, and then who is on deck.
All righty, good evening, everybody. Our first comment tonight will be Ms. Janet Drummond, and on deck will be Ms. Gina Allard.
The middle one, right there. Yep, and then you can just move that microphone down and speak directly into that one. It's ready to go, you don't have to turn it on.
Okay, my name is Janet Drummond. First of all, I'd like to thank the leading board members for all of the work that you've done. It's been incredible to see what's happened over the last couple of years, so thank you. And I also wanted to say, in the presentation of the CMU Tech, I was really impressed with that, really, really impressed. I think my granddaughter had been involved with that, and I wasn't really aware of what's available to these kids, you know, that they can actually earn associate degrees, you know, being in a high school situation, being able to go to a school like that, where they're not having to pay extra money, and just what's available. So, I think that is awesome, really awesome. And I think that really needs to go out to the public, so a lot more people are aware of it. Because I, I think if more people were aware, you'd be bombarded with people. And I'd also like to say, I am so excited that Barbara is coming on board with the board. I had an opportunity to speak with her several times when she was a security officer out here, and she told me so many stories about relationships that she had with the parents and with the students in those schools, and how much she really, really cares about the students. And she's given up a lot to be able to get on the board like this, and I'm just so excited that she's gonna be on here. I think incredible things are gonna happen, so I just wanted to say, yay, Barbara, way to go. Thank you.
All righty, up next we have Ms. Gina Allard, and on deck we have Ellen Muniz. Elon? My bad.
Hi, my name is Gina Allard, and I've had the privilege to be living here for twenty-three years, and I came across a prayer that has just stuck in my heart. For the last six months, I've been going on high places in the valley to share this prayer, and I think it's commendable for all of us to rise, as one person can make a big difference. So, I'm gonna pray, I'm just gonna pray, and I'm just gonna share with you the ones that I've been speaking out loud, and I think things are happening. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for my city, and that I am blessed with the privilege of living here. I thank you that by placing me here, you have assigned me to spiritually steward the place where I live. So, today, I rise up and take my place at the right hand of the Father in all spiritual authority. Lord, according to Zachariah 10:1, I pray that you would send forth rain to my city. Let an outpouring of the Holy Spirit fall on this place and overcome any evil forces operating against it. In the name of Jesus, I curse every wicked spirit operating against this city right now, and command every demon to flee this place, in Jesus' name. The righteous are claiming this place; no weapons formed against it will prosper. Every tongue that rises against this city will be shown to be in the wrong. I declare this is a godly city, and righteousness prevails. I command the spirits of. I command the spirits of poverty, violence, anger, hate, witchcraft, atheism, lying, sexual immorality, and all other wrong spirits to leave in Jesus' name. I bind every foul spirit that is affecting this city and command them to stop in their maneuvers and cease and desist in their actions. Now go, I plead the blood of Jesus around this city and declare angels are camped around us here. Psalm 91, "Safe and Secure," is over my city. I pray for every leader in this city according to 1 Timothy, the mayor, the city council, and all others in authority. I pray that they would rule justly and with godly wisdom. I pray for strength and blessings for them. In the name of Jesus, I bind Satan from operating over the political of this city. I'll go to the end and I say, I expect it, I receive it, and I thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
All righty, up next we have Elon. Is it Muniz? Muniz? I'm just butchering, I'm sorry bud.
Oh, you're good. It's a tough name, a lot of people, a lot of people have a hard time with that.
All right, and on deck we have Ms. Anna Elliott.
Man, it's kind of nerve wracking. So I just wanted to thank Angela, I, who invited me to come here. I got to meet Andrea and Angela the other day at Grand Junction High School. So, I'm, my name is Elon Muniz. I'm a first-year teacher here in the valley at Grand Junction High School, I'm an art and intervention teacher. But last year I was a substitute teacher, and I'm, I'm here to, to talk about the expansion of the Dual Immersion Academy program, or DIA. So, you know, for me, you know, I, I didn't really understand what DIA was until I saw it. And I, you know, being a sub, I was able to go all around the valley, and I spent a lot of time in the DIA program. So, right now, I'm trilingual. I, I know English, Spanish, and American Sign Language. Growing up, I didn't, I didn't speak Spanish. And me and my family were Chicano. And so, uh, my, my grandfather was from Mexico, and, and he only spoke Spanish. And so growing up, I, I really didn't, I really didn't recognize, you know, what I was missing with him, you know, I was only ever able to say the same three things to him. And it wasn't until I got to see the DIA program that I really understood what I was, what I missed. Three years ago, he passed away, and you know, it's, you know, it's time we don't get back. You know, and had, had I been able to have a program like DIA growing up, I would have, you know, been able to know him better. As I was a sub, I got to meet all kinds of kids. One of the kids, uh, he was a fifth grader. Uh, he's in sixth grade now. Uh, his name is Kevin. Really, really smart, funny kid. I met him at, at one of the regular elementary schools, I, I can't remember which one it was. And, um, he, he was really quiet. So, um, he was really quiet, he wasn't doing anything, and I was trying to start class. One of the kids told me that he didn't speak any English. And so I went over to him and in Spanish, I was like, all right buddy, like, let's go ahead and put away our computer. But we got to get started. And he, he's like, oh my gosh, he speaks Spanish. And so he's bringing me all these things, and he's like, I, I need your help with this, I can't do this, I don't know what this is, I don't know what they want me to do with this. And so I recommended him to the DIA program. Right, because the DIA program is, is a program built for people like me and people like him. I got to see him, you know, the, the second semester in the DIA program, and he was so much more vibrant and alive, and he, he was just doing great. And, you know, DIA ends at eighth grade. And, you know, I just want to see it expand and go further, and yeah, I have some graphs, but if you get.
Email those, any of that information that you have, and if you have additional follow-up, definitely send that to the board.
Awesome, yeah, and, I mean, it's from Thomas &amp; Collier, and, yeah. Also, I feel like I've met your children before. Yeah, it was great, it was great. Awesome.
Thanks, Elon.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Up next we have Ms. Anna Elliott, and our final audience comment would be Ms. Ricky Howie.
DIA is a great school, I have a grandson there too. I'm reading, I'm surprised Nathan's not here, but I want to enter this into the record just so we have a historical record of some of the letters to the editors, a reminder as we go forward into the two years out the road that, um, maybe we can recall what happened during this session. And this is a letter to the Daily Sentinel, uh, November 2nd. A letter decrying politics was itself a political move. An October 29 letter to the editors submitted by Dr. Carrie Schulz and Doug Levinson, outgoing members of the D-51 Board of Education, eschew politically motivated activities, unquote. A special interest is that the letter itself, particularly the second, fourth, and fifth points, is obviously politically motivated, or there would have been no need of its being written. Since Dr. Schulz and Mr. Levinson have co-authored the Sentinel letter and named the candidates they are supporting, they must have decided to act or vote as a block, seeking to use their combined influence in an attempt to sway the voters of D-51. Their letter declares that candidates must not be beholden to any political or special interest constituent group, but the very candidates they recommended have the strong support of Restore the Balance in MVEA, the teachers' union. From what I've read and heard, Cindy Scala and Barbara Evanson appear for far less politically beholden to anyone than do those endorsed by the Schulz-Levinson bloc. If Evanson and Scala are evaluated by their resumes and excellence of hands-on service in D-51, they rather easily outqualify the other candidates. This was written by Merle Miller, a resident of Grand Junction. I know that we've gone forward and we're past, I wish I had come in earlier to beginning so we don't end on quite a note, maybe Ricky will help us with this, but it was my planned comments. I don't want us to forget what happened so we don't have another reason to go through this again in the future, thank you.
Thank you. And our final, final audience comment of the night would be from Ms. Ricky Howie.
Good evening. In 2009, D-51 opened a school on, in Glade Park. It lasted two years, and because of financial considerations, it was closed, it had as many as 20 students, and students there in Glade Park are now bussed into town. So friends of East Middle School, and yes, we're still in there plugging away, feel we have a right to ask why Gateway is not on the chopping block. The average amount of money spent per student in the valley is eight, or at least last year was 8,500. In Gateway, it was 44,000, $44,000 for each of 10 students and 10 adults. There are five buildings there, so this evaluation of buildings that we just, were discussed tonight should be looking at the quality of those buildings. And so we're asking why Gateway isn't number one on the chopping block, and why the district isn't already having meetings with parents there for the parents to decide whether they want their kids bussed into town more than an hour each way, or whether they want to do a charter solution or privatize homeschool their students. If a decision has got to be made on schools to close, Gateway should be number one on your list, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howie. And that concludes our audience comments, thank you everybody for coming up here, and Elon, I would ask that you email your, to the board, I'd love to hear the rest of it, so. Thank you. Back to you, Perez.
All right, thank you. Yes, thanks for the reminder, I know three minutes can seem long and it can go fast at the same time, so. Anytime you're cut short, please email information to the board. All right, we are going to move into our, is everybody good to keep going? Okay, all right. We are going to move into our consent agenda. So the consent agenda contains personnel items, or excuse me, personal actions and acceptance of gifts, items that are routine and can be approved by a single motion. Items on the consent agenda will not be discussed individually by the board unless an item is removed for individual consideration. Board members, is anyone requesting any items to be removed at this time? Okay, seeing none. I will state that we had a gift total of $26,479.87. Yes, thank you to our community for, for their generous gifts. Um, and that is all outlined in our packet, so you can see what those individual gifts go to students and schools. So do you have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We can take the vote.
Can I just say really quick, can I just, can we call out Charles P. D. Pope for?
Oh, yes.
His retirement?
Yes.
Just wanted to just note that we appreciate all of his many, many, many years of service, and thankfully finally gets to actually retire.
I'll believe it when I see it.
He still has 30 days, he lets us know.
Well, I think it's, yeah, it's technically, yeah, maybe a little bit more, but, yeah, we really appreciate you. Thank you so much, P. D.
Yes, thank you for, for bringing that to attention, so we're always appreciative of those who have given so much time to the district. All right, we can go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Dr. Schulz?
Yes.
All right. We now have, um, our, oh, there's a reverberation there, okay. Now we have our business items. First up, we have a resolution to shift boundaries for the high school students living in the Appleton-Wingate attendance areas. Do I have a motion for, uh, to move forward with this resolution?
So moved?
Second.
All right, and now we have discussion.
Yeah. So I had a few questions that I thought, I thought it would be worth just kind of re, just very quickly talking about our process, and then I had some questions. So I don't know, Dr. Hill, if you could kind of talk to us about what that process has been getting to this point, and what all we've done, what meetings we've had.
Yeah, if, if you'll give me a second, I, I put together some stuff and some slides just to try to give us kind of a history of how we got here, so. Advance for me, so, sorry. Let's see if I can get up there. So, um, so yeah, the vote tonight would be to adjust boundaries for, um, the Appleton and Wingate students for their high school years. But I thought it would be good to talk a little bit about, again, how we got here, not even just recently, but prior to that as well. So, um, before we jump into that, you know, all this is in an effort to address a few things, but one of them being the reconfiguration in the Fruta area and ensuring that we have enough space for the students in there, so on the, the next slide, just a little bit, oh, you gave me a clicker. That's dangerous, okay. On the next slide, so just a reminder about that 8-9 building, it was constructed in 2006. It was originally constructed to be a second middle school in the Fruta area to accommodate planned growth out there. Because of overcrowding at the time, it was temporarily used as an 8-9 configuration, and that temporary usage has been, has remained in place for about 18 years now. I, I went back and asked some folks that were here at the time what the plans were for that building out in that area, so one thing to remember is that in 2008, there was actually a bond to build an Appleton area high school that was going to, was the attempt to try to address some of the overcrowding in that area, and it failed. And then part of that 2018 master plan that we went through actually had information in it to try to address this issue as well. Um, and then in the 2019 bond that failed as well, there was a plan to add 10 additional, up to 10 additional classrooms at Fruta Monument High School, and then also tie together those buildings for safety reasons, so I just think it's important history because we're, we're trying to solve a problem today that, um, you know, that, that, not, not this is a problem, that's been in existence for 18 years, but it was never originally built for this purpose. And if some of those bonds had passed, then we would have been able to address some of these things earlier on. So this is actually from that master plan, which only, at that time only looked at, it didn't look at all the buildings in the district, but it looked at a, a chunk of them. And I just thought it was important to point out that some of the plans that they had in that 2018 process was to try to, again, add that fifth high school to try to address the, the challenges in the Fruta area. Also to convert that 8-9 to a 6-8, and then also the Fruta Middle School to a 6-8, because I think at the time they thought they might need the space for two middle schools out there. And then we've also been talking since that time about normalizing the grade configuration in the district, so this isn't something new that we just recently have been trying to address. So just some, some reasons why we're, we're looking at this as well, so due to declining enrollment impacting staffing in the Fruta Secondary Schools due to an interest in moving Fruta Secondary School, schools into a more traditional grade configuration and to better align feeder patterns, we began exploring options to accomplish the grade reconfiguration in the Fruta area. So Fruta Secondary Schools have continued to see a decline in student enrollment over the last few years, which, again, we're seeing at the district level as well. Because of this decline, they've lost staffing through the staffing model, and it's no longer sustainable. I think some of us that were at the one of the town halls, one of the principals shared that, you know, they, they don't have a tech ed program anymore because they don't have the staff for it, so it's, it's hitting the secondary schools in that area. This year, Fruta Secondary Schools are overstaffed by about nine FTE, which is about over $800,000 in unfunded positions in that area. And then enrollment to continue to climb just means that that, that number's going to jump as well. So, this is something that we have to address. I thought it might be interesting to look at the numbers for that area. And so you can see over time, the top line is the numbers at Fruta Middle School, and again, that's a 6-7 school. Um, and then the Fruta 8-9 numbers over time with 8-9, and then you can see it broken down by eighth and ninth graders beneath that. And then Fruta Monument High School, where the numbers have been over time as well. And then the total decline that they've seen since that 2019 peak year that we had as a school district, so again, there also continued to decline in enrollment, which is a different trajectory than I think they thought things would be on back when the master plan was done in 18 even. So, we've done some data presentations over this in the past, so that, our demographer presented enrollment data and projections to the board last January. We had town halls in Fruta and Grand Junction in January as well to talk about two topics, it was the Fruta grade reconfiguration, and then also there were some questions about should we continue to go out for bonds to scrape and replace old buildings and, and make updates to buildings? And so the survey was sent out to families at that time as well. These were the questions on that survey, I know it's been a little while, so the first question was, to what extent, and I'm really just now focusing on the, um, the grade reconfiguration, but also just the, the boundaries in general, so to what extent do you oppose or support transitioning Fruta schools to an elementary, middle, high school configuration with K-5 and elementary, 6-8, middle, and 9th through 12th and high school? We had around 1,400 folks fill out that survey at that time, and 70% supported and strongly supported reconfiguring the grades to be normalized to the rest of the district, and about 19% opposed it. And then the second question that we asked at that time was if the district could add a small addition to the high school, to what extent would you support or oppose moving ninth grade students? 9th grade students into that school? And so, again, about 1,400 responses, 74% strongly supporting that, and 18% opposing it. And then we also asked a question at that time around, would you rather have two small middle schools in that area, or would you rather have one larger middle school in that area? And you can see the breakdown of data was pretty similar between the two, with 50% supporting, 53% supporting or strongly supporting having two small ones, and then 51% strongly supporting or supporting having one larger one. So that was some of the data that was close to a year ago that we asked for. So since then, obviously, there was an interest, we felt like, from the community around, and that survey went out to the community that was impacted by potentially a grade reconfiguration in the Fruta area. We felt like there was enough data to move forward with exploring how to make that happen. So we had board work session discussions in March. A board resolution to address grade reconfiguration was approved on March 9, 5-0. The Fruta grade reconfiguration and boundary change meetings happened at Appleton last April, and that was to talk about elementary students. We also had a board special meeting to discuss boundary updates on April 13 that evening, and then we had a follow-up meeting on the 18th with the Appleton community as well. And then we had a board business meeting, I'm sorry, a board business meeting was on the 18th to give an update on boundary changes, and then we had a second meeting on the 19th. And then we had a board work session for the Appleton area boundary change update after that, and then we had a board special meeting to vote on a resolution to adjust boundaries for middle school students living in the Appleton Elementary School boundary last May. So that's, this has been part of that discussion along the way, as well as reconfiguring boundaries to try to help with reconfiguration plans down the road. Continuing with that, in this August, we had a board business meeting to discuss the Fruta area secondary school reconfiguration and gave an update on that. We had a Fruta reconfiguration community meeting in Fruta on October 4. We had one at Redlands on October 5. We had a virtual meeting on October 11. Survey, which questions were shared at those meetings, and then we also sent out to all Fruta families and staff a recording of the video, and then also at the end of that video was the QR code to take the survey as well. And then we had a board business meeting for high school boundary changes for the Wingate and Appleton Elementary School area and gave an update on that, and gave some of the preliminary survey results on October 17. We then sent out the survey again to all Fruta Middle School, Fruta 8-9, and Fruta Monument High School staff, because we did get some feedback from a couple teachers that didn't realize they could fill it out, the one that was sent out prior to that, so we resent that out directly to staff at those buildings. And then we had a board business meeting tonight to potentially vote on the resolution to adjust boundaries for the high school students. So we looked at boundaries last spring for middle school, now we're looking at high school attendance areas for Appleton and Wingate, and then the board, board update plan for December to discuss the reconfiguration options that we're looking at as well, because it's two things, right? It's boundaries, and then there's also the reconfiguration. We, I shared this with the board already, but we asked the staff the same questions we asked those family surveys, and so that 56 up there at the top was the one that, when Shannon sent it out, that was the amount of family and community members that filled it out at the time, and I'm just focusing on the question around whether you oppose or support a boundary change. And so we only had 56 family and community members fill it out. 48% said they strongly supported it or supported it, and 43% said they opposed it or strongly opposed it. And then that survey, they went out to staff again. We had 96 staff at the Fruta Middle, Fruta Monument, and Fruta 8-9 fill it out. Overall, 45% strongly supported or supported it, 35% opposed or strongly opposed it, and then you can see, excuse me, a breakdown by school below that as well. So again, that's the question around whether they supported a boundary change moving forward. So with that, I'm gonna, that's kind of how we've gotten to this point today. I know there's been a lot of other things that have happened as well, but I just wanted to reiterate, this isn't just something that we've brought up recently, it's something we've been discussing for a little while with this current board, but it's also been a discussion that's been going on for years around a priority around having the grade reconfiguration in the Fruta area be addressed. And so I know there was a question around trying to explore the maps closer, so I do have pictures of here, up here of the maps, and Shannon is online, because he can explain it better than I can, but for the resolution for tonight, the question was asked around, who is that actually going to impact, which students would be impacted by the boundary change tonight? So there's three maps that I have to share, and Shannon, I don't know if you're on right now, and if you want to walk us through these three.
I'm sure. Well, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, so basically, the Appleton area would be high school students that reside between 25 Road and 22 Road, east to west, and then north of G Road and south of L Road.
Sorry, Shannon, we're getting the map put back up, so we don't, there you go.
So, so north of G Road, south of L Road, and then it would be east of 22 Road and west of 25 Road would be the area that would be affected in Appleton. And then in Wingate, it would essentially be the Wingate Elementary Attendance Area, which extends southwesterly across the monument to another area that has about 23 high school students, so they would also be part of the change. If you show the next map, it shows the combined effect, and you can see the relative proximity to Fruta Monument High School in the upper northwest corner, and Grand Junction High School over on the eastern edge. And the transportation network makes the two schools essentially equidistant from these two student clouds, but those are the areas that would be affected.
And so this would only, this impacts where these students would end up going to high school for this.
Just high school. There's no change to elementary school. All of that remains as currently drawn.
Maybe we could also clarify that you guys have done a lot of work with families about grandfathering in certain students, and not that we need to go into it in great detail, but that that has been looked at, excuse me, and considered as far as, you know, if there's already a student at Fruta Monument High School, and they have another family member or another student that would be going, you guys have really considered, I think, all the ins and outs of how this could impact so that they don't have one student at one high school and another student at a different high school.
So there's, there's specific language as kind of an addition to the resolution that explains that, but our plan is, if this vote were to happen this evening, we are going to send out communication to all the Fruta area families, just so they're aware of the change, and then we have targeted communication that would go out right after that to families that would be impacted specifically for this, because it doesn't impact every family in the Fruta area. And then, and then we would also be inquiring with those individuals on whether or not they actually want to take advantage of the grandfathering clause, because if, where that essentially works is if they have a sibling who's already enrolled in the Fruta Monument High School classes, and they have a younger sibling, then they can actually grandfather into that school as well if they're in, if they're in middle school. But a family might say, I don't want to do that, and so just to get us more accurate numbers, we want to make sure, do the families actually want to take advantage of that or not, so we can figure out how many students that would have been slated to still be grandfathered into Fruta, maybe actually want to go to Junction in the end, so we'll try to clean that up. But mainly, just want to mention that we're, we have some communication that would go out if this were to be approved this evening.
So along those lines, how many, you know, as we try to wrap our heads around kind of a methodical approach through this, how many students are there that, so what I believe I just heard you say was that after we make the decision, then we'll figure out how many students it'll be. And I'm concerned about that because of just the capacity, you know, how do we know? I know that these boundaries align with keeping kids in an elementary school, going to the same middle school than high school, but I'm concerned that this is going to, you know, we ultimately don't know the impact of how many students this will be, and so I'm concerned about our planning of spaces in alignment with the long-term plan. In my head, it would make a lot of sense if we actually knew that beforehand, or had some sense of that, if we surveyed those families and understood how many people would stay, and then we could actually plan what we actually need to do with Fruta.
So, you know, Shannon, I don't want to speak for you, but I, my understanding is that let's, if everyone took advantage of the grandfathering clause, that your numbers are showing that we would, we would still be able to fit the students in the building. Is that accurate?
I'm using a rate of about 70% of students would adopt the new schools. We're just going one grade at a time. So from the Wingate area, we'd be talking about 57 children, and from the Appleton area, about 30, and if 70% of those go, and we maintain an appropriate admission policy at Grand Junction High School, the numbers work out within the capacities of the building. Every year, we add another grade. We're declining in both areas from a high school enrollment standpoint. So I'm showing a pretty viable transition over a three-year period of the students from these two areas into Grand Junction, and then we admit 143 children from elsewhere to Grand Junction High School, and we could limit some of that open enrollment behavior as well and make sure that we have a viable enrollment for the school. So there are some knobs that can be twisted. I've estimated that 70% of children would go. As far as others, you know, if the grandfathering rate becomes 50%, that works even better if a higher number of students elect to remain in the Fruta school system. Between the elementary volume and the number of students, seats that we have available at Fruta Monument High School, I think that 36-month period will need to be carefully managed, but based upon the simulations that I've done to the best of my ability, I believe it will work well.
So, so it's an estimate of how many students would go? And, you know, if we're going to offer busing that first year, I just, I would think we would want, that's a number we would, it's in our interest to know that number, or to get some sense, other than I understand the generic application of that number, but I just have no sense of whether or not that is what parents would choose, especially with busing provided. I think if busing weren't provided, then it would become a different calculation, because are all those parents going to drive their kids? Probably not, but, you know, I think we're adding an incentive for people to not move, and I don't, I don't have an opinion about that, I'm just, I'm just stating it as fact. And so how do we know? You know, we don't want to be in a position where everybody's like, no, I don't want to go, or, you know, if, if the plan is that 70%, and I understand that maybe we could accept 50%, but what if only 20% go, you know, then what do we do? So I, I would just think it would be in our interest to actually understand this.
So when you say that are not going to want to go, who exactly are you talking about? So when you say, like, what percentage is going to, are you saying everyone who's impacted by the boundary change, or the students that are impacted by potential grandfathering?
The students who, so, so both. It could be either population, so students who just choose to stay in Fruta Monument High School or stay alive.
Right, but we're looking at, so if this boundary change happens, we're talking about for next school year, the current 8th graders in the Wingate area would begin going to Grand Junction High School. It's not a huge amount of students, and then as well as the Appleton area. So it's not a huge number of kids that actually would be shifted in that first year. The question of whether somebody's actually going to take advantage of it or not is whether or not they have a sibling already at Fruta Monument High School, and that number's even smaller. And so, yeah, if that handful of kids, and I don't have the number in front of me, decide, no, I don't want to grandfather into Fruta, I want to go to Junction, my understanding is that we're okay, because actually Junction's numbers are higher right now, because they took a lot of school of choice students, because their enrollment was declining, which makes sense. So I think, to Shannon's point earlier, the principals are going to have to be really strategic about how many students they're allowed, they're able to let in through school of choice, and then once it gets closer to the start of the school year, and we actually have a head count who is actually showing up, if there's space available, then you can offer things through the transfer policy, but we are going to have to be really hyper-focused on, on how many kids we're letting in through school of choice at both of those schools, I would say, for the next couple of years, because again, this is, it accomplishes multiple goals, like you said, feeder patterns and things like that, but it also helps us to get the numbers right between those two high schools, so that we can accomplish the grade reconfiguration, and we don't want to have a situation where we're taking in a bunch of kids from outside of the boundaries into the Fruta area, and then the numbers just keep going up and we can't actually fit them, so. So, yeah, we may not have the exact number on that, but I, my understanding is that we're, even if this, all the students who could, who had the opportunity to grandfather into Fruta decide not to, it's not going to be that large of an impact on next year's numbers to make a huge impact on Junction. But I, did I, am I right on that, Shannon? I don't want to mess up your words.
Do we have those numbers?
Yeah, I thought you shared that before, didn't you, Shannon? The number of kids that live in that area that are 8th grade?
Yes, I did. It's 57 in Wingate and 30-some-odd in Appleton. I believe it's actually just 30, so my assumption was that 70% of them would go and 30% of them would grandfather. So, you know, in most of our prior transitions in these areas, those have been the ranges. It's been about 70% wound up going, but in some cases, it can range down to 50%, but that's not going to create an untenable impact on either building. And I'll just leave it at that. I just think that the, the district will need to work carefully to make sure that we don't admit students from other high school catchment areas as we manage this, but after 36 months, this will resolve back into our normal process for administering admission and open enrollment, and both of these schools will settle out at a desirable enrollment.
I see what you're saying. You're saying of those 50, I think I see what you're saying, if you're, of those 56 in the Wingate area, how many do they have siblings at the 9th through 12 right now? So.
And I think if 100, and I would say, 100% of them all want to go to Fruta Monument High School, Fruta Monument High School could handle it.
That's still okay. That is the extreme.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I think that's what Dr. Schultes is asking, not in, not in the 50% that would, like, if it drops down to 50%, but let's just say, every single family that could grandfather into Fruta Monument High School, we are comfortable, we are comfortable with those numbers if 100%. Again, would 100% likely grandfather in? Not likely, but I think that's what we're, we're wanting to make sure is, if they all did, we're fine either way.
So is that, is that correct?
I would say in the initial year, definitely. In the subsequent years, I would think there may be some challenges. If no one, if no one adopts these boundaries, and everybody refuses, even after we withdraw transportation, and everybody stays at Fruta Monument, and there's complete rejection of this boundary change, I'm not anticipating that future, because the surveying indicated that large numbers of these folks wanted to go to the new school. During the parent meetings, we have spoken with families individually that were welcoming this change, and in my 16 years with the district, there's been a desire to normalize grade configuration in Fruta. So I think that a large percentage of folks that have been involved will be part of the change, and I don't think there'll be 100% refusal of what we're proposing.
Yeah, I don't think anybody thinks that. We just, we were just trying to understand what we could, you know, what the worst-case scenario could be. So along those lines, so we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't anticipate, when we talked about this previously, we talked about adding out buildings. Is that, that's no longer the case?
So that, that's why I had mentioned earlier, it's kind of, there's two things that we're trying to tackle right now. So this is just the boundary change to try to help with starting next year, and then, and then the subsequent years, being able to get the enrollment right in those areas so that we can actually fit all the students. If we were to make a change for the reconfiguration starting next year, or even the following year, we're going to have to temporarily put some modular buildings, and we've had that conversation with, with the schools already, and we talked about it at the town halls, it was part of the presentation, to be able to move the 9th grade over to, to the Fruta Monument High School site until the numbers get to the point where they can all fit inside the building. So we would have to do some temporary fixes there, and that's why I mentioned earlier, if the bond had passed in '19, we would have had 10 additional classrooms on that building, and it didn't pass, so this is another option. classrooms on that building and it didn't pass. So this is a, another option would be to look at something temporarily through modulators. And I guess if the board wanted to explore down the road based on the facility master plan work, um, revisiting the idea of adding classrooms on that building and, uh, closing it off, um, then that could be something we could look at, but we don't have that currently because it did not pass.
So what sort of investment? So to me, that, so while we could fit those students, we can fit them with the addition of new structures. Um, so what would, what's going to be the cost of that? And do we know how many new structures without knowing how many kids, students are going to be there?
Yeah. So this is, um, and again, it's not part of tonight's presentation. It's more for our December board meeting when we, um, talk about trying to make some decisions around that other topic of reconfiguration. But, um, it, we're looking at four modulators temporarily. We already own them, uh, in the district, so we wouldn't have to buy them. It's just a matter of, um, you know, all the work that goes into installation of those. And so it's a one-time cost, um, to, to add them there. Um, and we've had some conversations around, well, you know, what is, is it, um, smarter to just continue to, instead of investing in that, subsidizing things like staffing, um, but that's ongoing cost. It actually outweighs the cost of, um, these temporary modulators. And then it doesn't actually accomplish having a nine through 12 and a six to eight situation in Fruta, which is what the community asked for. So, it wouldn't be, it doesn't cost enough, as much to go out and build onto the high school and add 10 classrooms. Um, so that would take something more substantial like a bond. Um, but it at least is a temporary solution that we could look at to be able to have the normalized grade configuration in the Fruta area.
I just want, I guess I would like to see that cost analysis. I would like to understand, like if we're, I hear you that investing in the replacement, the movement of those modulators is is less. It is less?
It's less, but it's also accomplishes the, the goal of trying to get normalized grades out there. So if you don't do that, you're not, you're not going to be able to fit ninth grade into the Fruta Monument High School. So then you, you continue to have the grade configuration the way it is now. So if the, the board voted on a resolution last spring for us to explore normalizing grades, that's what we've been working towards. And in order to do that sooner than later, it would, it would require some temporary buildings. Um, outside of that, you're, you're looking at, um, well, I guess you'd either look at a bond or you look at some really drastic, um, boundary changes to move even more kids out of that area.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm wondering if we would, if we could sequence, like, I'm wondering, I presume that we've looked at sequencing out, um, those grades in the other schools to keep teachers in, in permanent classrooms, you know? So presumably we, we've looked at this at every, from every direction. And so I'm curious about the direction, the other directions here. And I'm not saying don't, I'm, I'm not proposing that we don't realign here. I'm just wondering about these interim steps because everything is an interim step at this point. Um, modular buildings, you know, more modular buildings when we're in the middle of this long-term facilities plan where we've, you know, where we just presented that there's many improvements that we need to those buildings, adding more modulators is an interim solution. That's, we're not proposing that as a long-term solution. And so presumably there are other interim solutions over these next couple of years where we could sequence out students at middle schools, um, you know, have the sixth grade, you know, start to be in different locations. I'm just wondering what all the interim solutions are and what the costs of all of those are. Because, because to me, again, to say like, yes, we can fit them, we can fit them, we can fit them with temporary interim buildings, isn't the same thing as yes, we can fit them in the building and we're good. Um, so, yeah, I'm just, I just want to know about those interim solutions.
So I just, I want to bring us, we, we have a motion on the table about the boundary. So I think we're getting a little bit outside of that because this is the first, the first decision that the board needs to make. And then I think some of the, the questions and follow-up that Dr. Schultes is bringing is work that the district needs to do. So while, while it's very valid, we need to come back to the motion on the table.
Yeah. And to me, it's all linked. It just doesn't sound like we've, you know, if we're asking, you know, this board who controls the budget, what is the cost difference between taking this step or another step? And we don't know the answer to that. That's, that is the same thing for me.
Well, and, but I, I would say that whether you, um, whether you make the change next year or two years from now, three years from now, and you're looking at costs, this boundary change would need to happen for that to happen regardless. Um, and to your point earlier, this isn't just about the grade reconfiguration. It's also like those kids that split from their, or it's not siblings, from their classmates, um, after their eighth grade year. And so, um, again, we weren't prepared tonight to present on the topic of the reconfiguration and the building moves. Um, it was just around the boundary change, but, um, this would need to happen, I think, regardless to be able to make it fit, um, long-term for the students to be in those buildings. So.
I think I also just, for me and President Heights, I definitely hear what you're saying. Um, and I agree. However, my, one of my biggest concerns here is that we, that we avoid the many instances we've had this year of changing classrooms, you know, a couple of weeks or months into a semester or quarter. And so, you know, getting all this lined up before we get ourselves into that position feels really important to me. And that's been a struggle this semester as we've been moving everything around. And so.
I hear that, Carrie, and I, I, I agree. Um, I think it's just part of the work that we're going to have to continue to do. Th- this is just one piece of it, this resolution. And we're going to have to continue to, to do more work on it as we move forward. And, um, that's certainly something that I, I agree that we need to be watchful for.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I do as well. But yeah, it's just, it's hard for me to say, yes, let's move forward with this when we know that, like, well, we need this question answered. We need to focus on this. We need to make sure this is done. Um, you know, I, I would hope that our process would, um, you know, be more upfront and allow us to answer some of those questions before we make these decisions.
Yeah. And I, and I want to be clear, this, um, it's, it's not as if the, the principals, um, of the buildings out there or the site directors or anybody have just kind of been sitting back waiting for this to happen to start having other conversations. I mean, um, Principal Kluusmaier, when he did his final interview, his artifact he brought was if we end up doing this because we were already starting to talk about it, here's some ideas I have around addressing it. So they've, they've been having conversations with, um, especially at the, the high school level, the staff around if this were to happen, um, where would classes be, what classes would be offering? So I know they're trying to plan for whether it happens next year or it has to wait another year before the reconfiguration happens, how they could actually, um, um, plan better for that as well.
And that would all be part of the consideration that we'll have to continue, tho- those kinds of decisions will continue to have to be made. Do we do it now? Do we do it later? When, when and how, um, based on ongoing information that we'll get?
Yeah. I just, I guess I am just still struggling with the fact that I'm not sure that this is the most cost-effective option at this point, but I'm actually not quite sure what the options are.
That the boundary change is cost-effective or?
At this, at this point, because again, moving kids into modulators, not sure what.
And if we, but if we don't move forward with the boundary change, then.
What other interim?
Well, then we can't, then, then we can't do the reconfiguration because if we leave the boundaries the way they are, then we're going to have too many students in Fruta and those buildings can't handle the amount of students. So this is, this boundary change right sizes the high schools. And so if this boundary change doesn't move forward, then the reconfiguration is put on hold completely. Because we have to resituate, excuse me, we have to resituate where the students are. And I, I, I hear what you're saying. I know that we, we learned a lot from the consolidation and closure of East. And I think some things were, were, were maybe foreseen and other things were not. Like we had a group of challenge students at Redlands Middle School that I think there, we thought were going to go to Orchard Mesa Middle School and decided not to and decided to stay at their home school. So we learned the lesson there that then Redlands Middle School had, you know, the extra amount of students that we didn't necessarily anticipate because we thought they would follow the challenge program. And so I think there's some things we're going to learn as we go. And I think we've learned a lot. And I know that staff is documenting all of that and we're, and we're processing through that. I just, um, this to me just right sizes the schools. And then I think all the other concerns that you've expressed are the things that we will take step by step as we then have to move forward with the final decision of when the reconfiguration will take place.
And that information will.
I think there's time to gain the rest of that information.
How that decision is made.
Do we have any more questions or thoughts or discussion?
I don't, I don't want to cut anybody off. So if you.
No, I just, I just don't understand the cost implications of the interim steps. And, um, I'm, I'm not going to in the next five minutes or 10 minutes or hour. So.
Yes, some of those were presented at the two, um, well, not, not necessarily the in-depth of the cost, but you know, when, when they did the forum meetings of, of whether we move forward with the reconfiguration in 24, 25 school year or 25, 26 school year, um, some of that information has started to kind of come about on what those costs would be versus, you know, moving modulators, you know, early versus like what Dr. Hill said, then staffing moving forward. So I think that's all information that's still to come. For me, we've had overwhelming support from the community that wants the reconfiguration. And this boundary change is the first step that we have to take in order to move forward on that. And I think then there's time to get the rest of that information and the questions that you've had um, to the board in order to make the, the larger decision of when the reconfiguration will take place.
I believe that the resolution for tonight is for the reconfiguration to take place in the, in 24, 25, right? That's not a question.
No, it's the boundary change.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Right. But the boundary change has to go into effect now.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and I don't disagree. I think that we, I think that there is clear communication from the community that, that the realignment of the grades needs to happen. I just am not, I'm not sure that this path forward is the, is the most cost-effective approach. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we can go ahead and, uh, take the vote for moving forward with the resolution on the boundary change.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Um, our next resolution is, um, to sell the Hawthorne Building. So this is to put the building up for sale. Um, so do I have a motion to move forward with the resolution, um, for the sale of the Hawthorne Building?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about this. So it seems like that, the contract was signed January 30th. Can we get an explanation of that?
We'll get Clint up here to.
The contract was signed January 30th.
The contract to list the building?
Well.
We're, we're just, we're only listing.
With our, um, realtor, that's the attachment to this resolution.
So our realtor, we've contracted with, um, River City to, to handle any of our property acquisitions or sales?
So it wasn't done just for this?
No.
That was. Property. It was done a little more holistically for any property.
Correct.
That was the RFP that we did, um, a while ago. And, um, we, I was part of that committee where we used the rubric to then vet, um, or grade how we, we're going to move forward on the RFP, uh, with those companies. And so then we did contract with River City for them to handle any real estate needs that we have. But we, we have not listed this property yet, right? So we've not signed a contract that's putting this, this property on the market until obviously the board votes on it.
Correct.
Okay. That's all seems great. I was very confused about that attachment and the date on that attachment. Okay.
Good, good for clarification. Thank you for bringing that up. Right, any other questions?
Oh, I mean, yes. Why did we decide to sell Hawthorne? What was the decision making there?
So, um, we've been utilizing Hawthorne as really just a storage, um, building. So we've had, uh, books in there and have used it for some other, some other things like that. But it really has just been a building that's been sitting there and we've been using it, running utilities and, and keeping it operational without any other use. And so we thought this would be a good time for us to, to list it. And we've had some interest. So we thought maybe we'd put it up on the market.
Okay. And so after the housing committee, um, got shut down, we decided that we're not interested in pursuing that, um, option with that specific property. And have we decided whether or not we would remediate the property before sale or are we just going to try to sell it as?
We're just going to try to sell it.
Okay.
We, we got some good advice, I think, from River City that, uh, we could list it for the, the price, uh, I think that's on the resolution there or the, um, document. And so, yeah, they thought we could just list it for that and I think we'll be fine.
Um, and then what would happen if we didn't move forward? What, you know, what would be the cost of no action here?
Well, we'd have a building that was sitting empty and, and I think right now with where the district's at, I think it's in our best interest to look at, um, selling off the property and utilizing those funds, um, elsewhere.
The footprint is small enough that there's no foreseeable use for the district specifically.
And remediation would cost us, you know, over $400,000. So I'm not sure that the district is interested in picking up that cost and trying to take care of that building. Yep.
Thanks, Clint. So Dr. Schultes, on just a quick side note, the housing committee, um, there is a small contingency that's still working towards, um, gathering some information, but it has kind of refocused from, um, doing something particularly with district property to gaining more, um, usable information from our school community that then we can start to move forward with. So that initial survey that they had come to ask the $10,000 for, they've kind of gone back to that and they're revisiting that along with the state and moving forward in that direction. So then it'll be better useful information um, to come forward with. All right. Any other questions for the Hawthorne Building?
Okay. Do we have a, um, we can take the vote for the resolution to sell the Hawthorne Building?
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
Yes.
Alrighty. And that concludes their business items. Um, next up we have, um, board open discussion. Anything anybody wants to share or say?
Um, just for me real quick, um, I, I know Doug couldn't be here tonight and he always talks about keeping the main thing, the main thing. But, uh, I wanted to tell Doug and Carrie that, you know, it's, it's been a pleasure. We've, you know, we've butted heads a few times, but sometimes that makes better, you know, friends and, and co-mates. And so it's been a good, I'd say, year with you. So, um, I would wish you luck in all your endeavors and, and hopefully we see you at future board members and our future board meetings and still keeping up with our community for our kids because we're all in there for the right thing. So thank you both for your services and we'll see you around.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Um, I've had a lot of people ask me for an update on East and the construction over there. So could we get a quick little update on East and the construction? Is there any construction going?
There's no, there's no construction happening at that school.
Okay. Uh, there seems to be, well, is Turuncie moving into East or what's happening?
We're temporarily, um, moving that program because we had a lease that ended at another space. And so, um, it's a temporarily expulsion, I'm sorry, um, uh, move while we figure out long-term for that. And then just in the interim, um, you know, the, the, we still have that shared space with the city. So they use it, uh, the gym for different sports. And then we've, um, utilized some of the space in the building for, uh, professional learning because we don't have a lot of meeting space in the district that can hold that many people. So we've been using it for some different uses, but we haven't figured out the long-term plan for it. And that's just, um, that one program is just because we needed a place to put them mid-year.
Okay, that makes sense. I wonder if there's a way we could better kind of share out that information because all of the residents around East see everybody going in and out of East. And so people are wondering what's happening. So I wonder if there's a way we could more effectively share that information. Um, and then, and then I do want to revisit. So I am, I am really curious about this challenge that we've had this year. And I understand the, the ins and outs of the challenges of moving, um, kids in classrooms within their schools, um, after the start of the year. And I had
And I had asked for the consideration of a policy and I understand that there's not the appetite for a policy for that, but I do wonder if there's any space where we could have some sort of a policy for if, if kids are getting moved out of the classroom beyond, I don't know, the first week or whatever is reasonable, that the principal has a meeting with all impacted parents or something, just some way to better communicate out that information of kids, you know, classrooms and social lives being changed, you know, after some very reasonable period. I think that most of the parents that have been reaching out to me just, you know, need clarification and want more information and all of them have reported back that they've talked to their principals, but it, there's some breakdown in the communication and the fact that it's reached the board three times now at three different schools is an indication to me that we can do better. And I think we all always want to do better. So I just wonder what are the, you know, ways we can envision doing better with that communication? Um, and of course we don't want classrooms to be changed so far into the semester, but if they have to be, you know, how can we better deal with that is my question.
I guess my, uh, concern with that is, does that need to be a board policy or is, that just need to be a, a change in procedure in the way that we do business?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Certainly I would think that that would behoove the district to have that better communication as we move forward, should that happen again. Um, I'll let you address that.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not going to get into specifics of these situations, but, you know, uh, two of them, um, were because of, um, boundary changes and, um, the closure of East. And so principals making adjustments after they had the students enrolled in the building. And, you know, I think principals try to make those adjustments as soon as possible. One of them, they made it at the, um, at the quarter end to try to make it a smoother transition at that point. And then the other one, um, you know, I've already shared with the board about the, um, the amount of students, the low, extremely lower amount, that doesn't make any sense what I'm saying, um, amount of students that we had in kindergarten at, at a building. And I've already talked about, we probably could have made some decisions earlier on that one. Um, and so that was a learning experience there. But yeah, I mean, traditionally you're not going to have, um, these situations happening every year. Um, and I know the principals are not intending to do that, um, after a certain date, um, but they, they tried to make a decision that they thought was in the best interest of kids and, and the classes that they were offering, um, and tried to communicate with families. So, um, yeah, I, we can have a conversation about, um, instead of, you know, if that communication went out by email, should it be something more like a parent meeting? I think those are some, some opportunities that we could talk with the, um, the principals about.
I think the one thought I have is in light of, um, recent world events, um, I'm thankful in our community, um, although it's not been true 100% of the time, is that we haven't seen a massive anti-Semitic protest. And so, um, I know it's happened here. We had the flyers that took place, um, what, almost a year ago, was it last Christmas, that were displaced around town. And so I just want to thank our community that we've not seen, um, I guess some of the extensive anti-Semitic, um, activities that have happened both in our nation and worldwide. And so that we can, um, you know, stand in solidarity with our allies in Israel. So I just say that from my own personal standpoint and just thankful that we have a community that supports one another. Anything else? All right, coming up we have future meetings. So November 28th, we actually have a board organizational meeting that will be when the two new, newly elected board members are sworn in. And, uh, we will do organization. So that will be a short meeting swearing those members in and then seeing who will take, um, positions as president, vice president, secretary, moving forward. And then December 12th, we will have a board work session and December 19th, we will have a board business meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, so moved.
Thank you everyone for your time this evening. Please take some cake and can all wish Dr. Schultes well, um, this evening before you take off. Thank you all.